And just give one sec.
Welcome to the special meeting of council of March 31st, 2020 at 6:40, 5:40, 4:40 countdown, 4:40 PM. Call to order and a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Dennis Perrier. Be it resolved that the agenda for the special meeting of council held on March 31st, 2020, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved as circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Approved? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared, petitions and delegations, none noted. Acceptance of the minutes and recommendations. Not required. Reports from municipal officers and communications, treasurer Keith Gorman.
Thank you worship, good evening. On March 17th, 2020, the government of Ontario declared a state of emergency under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, allowing it to invoke measures to protect the health and safety of all Ontarians related to the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result of this declaration and its associated orders, numerous businesses, organizations, facilities and related amenities have been forced to temporarily close. This has likely resulted in potential financial hardships. And we've heard several concerns in regards to timing of tax and utility payments within the municipality. Both the provincial and federal governments have released details relating to relief programs, which have been aimed to support those individuals and businesses most impacted by COVID-19. But the timing of these programs and the extent to which the relief still needs to be determined in most instances. It is anticipated that these relief programs are the only, are only the initial efforts to be announced. And that there will be likely more forthcoming or modifications to those previously announced. A good example of this would be the wage subsidy program, which jumped from 10% last week to 75% this week. The municipal act provides authority for council to offer short-term relief to taxpayers facing economic challenges with some limitations. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario suggests that these decisions should be guided by councils intent. Which in this case, I would suggest is immediate fiscal challenges faced by COVID-19. AMO also suggests that should be supported and advised by municipal treasury staff. As such, these would be considerations which warrant further discussion and have been considered in other municipalities recently in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic. Please remember that each municipality is different and appropriate solutions will vary from one to the next. Option A would be a tax deadline extension. The ease of implementing such a thing would largely depend on where in a billing cycle municipality is. The most common instances we've seen thus far. Sorry, can you say? We'll jump back to the tax deadline extensions. As I was saying. As I was saying, the ease of implementing such a measure would largely be dependent on where in a billing cycle the municipality is. The most common instances that we've seen of this measure appear to be municipalities which are in between interim billings and final billings. Deferrals are typically aimed at the process rather than installment specific. Challenge that we face in Kirkland Lake is we are literally midway through collection of our interim levy, which is in accordance with bylaw 20002. Our tax bills have been distributed in early February, well before the pandemic, and identified two separate installment dates, one of which was March 9th or March 12th, the other is April 9th. As such, most accounts have already had payments applied against the 2020 interim tax levy. To extend previous due dates, it will likely create significant administrative work, given the payments that have been applied and would present challenges from a systems perspective. As such, we would not recommend this action. The second option we have is waiving penalties. So bylaw 20002 reads on all taxes of the interim levy, which are in default to the first day following the last day of payment of each installment, a penalty of 1% shall be added and thereafter, a penalty of 1% per month will be added on the first day of each and every month the default continues. So as we read that bylaw, it essentially specifies two aspects of penalty. The first would be a penalty associated with non-payment or defaulting on that particular installment. Penalty of 1% shall be applied on the first day following the last day of payment for each installment. As such, the April 12th installment has already had this penalty applied. Similarly, in accordance with the bylaw, we would be applying a 1% penalty specific to the April 9th installment, should taxpayer not have remitted by that date. It should be noted that the penalty would apply only to the levy and not historical tax arrears in this instance. So somebody that was faced with a $758 installment due April 9th, should they not remit, would be hit with a $7.50 penalty. The costs to waive such a penalty would not be significant to the municipality. It's not something that we typically rely upon as a revenue source. I am looking at prior years, 2019 and the March aspect of the penalty. It's typically been around $5,000 to $6,000 per instance. Staff would recommend that council direct us to waive the provision of this bylaw specific to the April 9th installment of the levy, as it provides immediate benefit to those struggling to meet the current deadline, which is April 9th. The second aspect of penalties is interest. As I spoke earlier, it suggested that there were some limitations to which we could offer, and this would be one of those limitations. Legislation requires that penalty and interest be applied in the same manner and at the same time for all properties. So as such, if we were looking to waive interest, it would be waived on all tax arrears, including historical amounts that may have been accumulating for months or even years. If council were to waive interest, property owners who have effectively paid the least amount of taxes over the last several years stand to benefit most. Well, we understand that the pandemic has presented significant challenges. We wouldn't recommend this option as it provides little relief in relation to the immediate dilemma. And it could potentially compound or intensify a substantial tax severe problem that we face within the municipality. If we were to go down the path of exploring or waiving interest, we could use April 2020 as an example. Should we opt to waive it, we would likely forego $20,000 in interest revenues relating to historical tax arrears in an effort to try to eliminate or reduce $5,000 to $6,000 in interest, intended to assist property owners who go into arrears as a result of the current pandemic. As such, given that the outcome doesn't necessarily align with the intent, staff would not recommend this option. However, when you look at these two aspects of penalty on the whole, the way the bylaw reads, it does sort of grant a grace period on interest. It's not like a credit card where the day you miss your payment, interest starts to accrue. The bylaw reads that effectively on the first day of the month, we will start to accrue interest. And by waiving that first aspect of the penalty, so the default or the non-payment aspect, you've effectively given people a three-week grace period before we would actually begin to apply interest on that May, on May 1st. Outside of tax payments and installments, some concerns also come up in regards to water and utility billing, largely given the timing of our installments and in relation to when you do our billing. The bulk of our utility bills are prepared on a quarterly basis. In, under normal circumstances, staff would essentially begin this process in April and amounts would become due towards the end of April. Thankfully, because we're in advance of this process, we can, we're sort of control it better than that of like your tax installment aspect. We have the ability to override due dates prior to preparing the invoices. And we're not restricted by bylaws that we've previously passed that indicate due dates. As such, staff would recommend that we amend the billing due dates to be extended for an additional three weeks, so not to overlap with a grace period that would be given to ratepayers. Should we opt to basically waive that default penalty and allow that effective grace period of three weeks to the end of April. The last aspect that I think we really want to point out is the bylaw specifies that the tax collector and treasurer have the authority to accept partial payments on account. Should a ratepayer be experiencing financial hardship due to the current pandemic or any instance, they may contact municipality to discuss the circumstances and arrange a payment plan that is mutually agreed to. It is important for ratepayers to understand that the municipality will be supportive of their challenges and will work with them to resolve these issues. In light of that, staff would recommend promoting this form of relief. So the above recommendations are intended to provide short-term timing relief to those affected by the current disruptions and earnings with the intent to bridge to relief programs that are being offered by various levels of government. It's an intentionally cautious approach. Taxes are approximately one-third of our revenues. When you add in water and utility bills, it approaches 50%. Timely collection of these are critical as they're relied upon to continue providing essential services. In addition to labor costs associated with fire, governance, public works, et cetera, the municipality is also tasked with various contract and service payments, such as policing, social services, water management, waste collection, and similar. As the situation continues to evolve, like other municipalities, we can continue to assess and consider further relief measures as we better understand the impact.
Comments or questions from council?
Jean.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Keith, I noticed that Timmons has waived all penalties and interest during the COVID pandemic.
Yes, and so, I mean, I'd read the Tibbons press release and then followed up with the report to council. The only thing I would caution in regards to something like that is you've left it fairly open-ended in regards to what the length of the pandemic is and that kind of thing. I think we've just got to step back for every month that we were to waive interest. You're effectively foregoing that $20,000 in interest revenue.
I guess one comment I have Keith, the extension of three weeks doesn't seem like a very long period. I mean, obviously, we don't know how long this pandemic is going to go on. And along most of the services will be canceled or extended down the road before they reopen. Will it be very difficult other than us calling another meeting in three, four weeks' time? A special meeting to extend these dates if we feel necessary.
I think we could, at this point, we could probably report back. I think the chancellor fairly understands the full impact on the municipality. As you're looking towards some of the other payments, a lot of them are being rolled into their mortgages and we would expect that to be we're seeing instances where people are already getting those payments. I mean, by waiving that default penalty would allow for three weeks. We could address waiving that May 1st calculation. Now that it's beyond, at the hit of about $20,000. Turn your three weeks into seven.
We do know there is no alternative, but it's going to cost, as you mentioned, the $20,000 a month.
It becomes a budgetary act for lack of a better way to determine. There are ways that we could look to try to recoup that $20,000. The interest that the municipality is applying, legislated. Try to recover them over a longer term period.
Counselor White?
So this $20,000 in historical tax arrear, is this actually money your department expects to collect on this, this term? Or is it something that falls into like vacant and abandoned buildings situation where we're not going to see that money unless we end up vesting that property, et cetera, et cetera, down the line?
So some of it would fall under.
Yeah, I can't hear him.
We're not practicing social distancing, I apologize. So essentially, as you've suggested, it would be all historical tax arrears, including those that might be on on the listing that are several years old and at which point we would have to assess them for the ability to collect. It should be noted that we need that to actually be added to the rule to effectively try to recoup upon timing of tax bills and that kind of thing. So it's not necessarily dollar for dollar, but we would want to obviously have them on the wall in an attempt to basically recoup them at some point in time, whether it be from the property holder or through a tax cell.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I, you know, when you make things sound too complicated for the average citizen, I just find it just hard to, you know, for these people to understand. I mean, Timmons saying, you know, forgive me, the penalties and interest, boom, it's done deal. It's good for a month or two months and then you just announce that, you know, you're going to start collecting taxes. And I, and I think a lot of that $20,000, like Stacy has just said, you know, a lot of stuff is never going to be collected. It's not money that we're going to collect from anybody. We've got hundreds of properties that are sitting there that are either abandoned. People that just aren't paying their taxes are not going to, and are not likely to pay them. I think we have to start doing a better job either registering these properties and taking them over and either peddling them or doing something different. I don't think a two-month hold on interest and penalties would be too detrimental to the community for money we're not going to collect anyway.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, certainly, there's about seven other municipalities that have extended interest in waiving the fees, sorry, charges against the pain late up towards June. So that seems to be a pretty common number, extended as long as you can. Well, certainly June seems to be the number. But I'm all for that and certainly there's, there's, there's a lot going on out there. And I think the big thing as well is communicating to people that they should be calling if they can't pay, because we can set up those payment plans, X amount per however to be done. But that somebody's telling me today, a business owner, that they, that they're not able to pay and they want us to make a decision tonight, but I had to inform him as he wasn't aware that he can call the town and set up a payment plan that fits his liking, right? So yes, we can't do a blanket, but certainly the biggest approach to other municipalities, especially those going to June, is waiving interest and late fee charges. June's, whatever, certainly Keith can recommend, but that's certain, that's something that's very popular.
Casey?
I would tend to agree with Counselor Adams on this one. Like, is there any way that we can just send out the bills for water and taxes and encourage people that can afford to pay, pay their bills on time? And then for those that can pay them, make the arrangements with the municipality to have them deferred. But we still would waive those fees up until June at some point when we can reassess the situation and go from there.
The challenge specific to the interim installment would be the bill is sitting on somebody's fridge right now. And it clearly indicates the April 9th aspect. So I think the easiest thing at this stage is, is that first aspect is the, basically, or you're waiving of the default aspect.
What? Sorry, can we just waive that? But I don't see why it's complicated. I mean, if we can just pass a motion tonight, okay, we're waiving that, that interest if you're not paid on time until June whatever, and then move on from there.
That's not as complicated because you're not actually extending the tax deadline. You'd still encourage people to remit timely payments, but those who are faced with financial hardships have several weeks to months to basically extend that payment.
Okay. See, that's something that I feel would be easy to understand. We're just, the deadlines are staying the same. You're going to get your bill all the same, but if you can't pay it, you're not going to be penalized until, or we're not going to send out letters, we're going to cut off your water by this date if it's not paid. Like, we don't want to add stress for no reason at all. So just, I would feel comfortable going with that direction. Like, just send out the bills, keep the dates on them, but just waive the interest if it comes to that.
Rick of C A L?
Thank you worship, through you to council. Anything is possible. I think the treasurer has laid out some good options. The one here.
I think you're muted. I don't see you in here.
Oh, I'm gone.
Do you want to do musical chairs?
Thank you worship, through you to council. So the treasurer has laid out some good options that are conservative, but also allow the full information to materialize over the next month or two as well. The one thing that's available to all residents and is a really good option is monthly pre-authorized payments, where residents can go on the pre-authorized payment plan, which divides their bills into 12 equal payments. And that way, it assists them from a budgeting and a monthly household income perspective. The, we don't have that here.
You can do it online.
The treasurer is going to work diligently to try and, and get that in place as soon as possible. So that's one of the options that we could look at to help out for sure. But the interest penalties, extending them to June, if that's what council would like to do, certainly doable. But you also have the option in the future as things materialize and more information becomes available. So it's entirely up to council, worship.
I do agree, what's presented, it's going to be a little complicated for the average Joe on the street. Trying to do the easiest and quickest method and understandable to the public. And I think that's important. People are under a lot of stress right now, that's for sure. And complicating it is not going to make it any better.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yes, I think, you know, just by waiving the interest and penalties and still sending them with their bills as usual, if they can afford to pay them, they're working at Kirkland Gold and making 175,000 bucks a year like all those guys are. You know, then that's great, you know, but the people that are having a hard time either getting laid off because they're, they're not working or they're, they've been laid off by their employer, their hours have been cut. It would be, it just makes it simple for them to understand. It's just, the process is not complicated. It's just, hey, your bill is due, but we're not going to charge any interest or arrears until that, you know, until, hey, June 1st.
The other option would be going a two-month period and then reviewing if we do need a further extension.
Makes sense.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, these are not normal times. And, you know, we've got businesses that are closed that have no income coming in at the moment. We have a lot of people that are in low-paying jobs that are currently laid off because that type of business is partially shut or shut down completely. I think, you know, we should waive the penalties and the interest until June. I'm going to go out on a limb here and say this pandemic's not going to be over in three weeks. I think that's a pretty safe bet.
I agree.
So doing something for three weeks, then we got to come back and do it again. We're not giving the people sitting at home any feeling of security. But at the same time, I think we should put a letter in encouraging them to pay what they can now, so that when it all said and done, they aren't going to end up with one whopper bill that they can't pay. I think we need to encourage them to pay if they can afford to pay whatever they can. And then waive the, the penalties and the interest.
I agree, Counselor Owen. The bill is not going to go away. And if you can do it in easy payment, on an easy payment plan and stretch it out, I think that's, that's a reasonable request.
Counselor Owen?
Can we make sure when we send out these water bills or tax bills that the note is clearly indicated on it? Not like last year's water bill where it was a little line way at the bottom and you did not see it. And we had public backlash, well, many other backlashes, but just make sure this is clear as a heading.
We can miss, we can add in an insert with the actual bill, just to provide that clarity and then with communications to sort of qualify grace period extended and how it works and encourage prompt payment for those that are in a situation to do so.
It, it wasn't clear as Counselor Owens is saying in the past and ended up being a bit of a horror story that council took a lot of criticism for and staff. Staff had to put up with it, it was unfair unfortunately, but we want to make sure it is clear. I agree.
So are we looking at? Just bear with us for a minute, okay?
Just fixing up the motion here. So. So if I do a motion moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that report number 2020-FIN-005 entitled Tax and Ratepayer Relief COVID-19 be received, that staff be directed to present a bylaw to council to authorize the town of Kirkland Lake to waive the penalty and interest associated with the late payments on the second installment due April 9th, 2020. due April 9th, 2020 until June 30th, 2020. And that staff be directed to review the next quarterly utility billings timelines and adjust the schedule to ensure the water utility billings due dates extend beyond the grace period granted for this. I might have changed.
I was going to say, this one, I'd be cautious before we go too far ahead.
Okay.
Because if you're extending tax out till the end of June, you're now effectively delaying your water quarter, and you might pile those water bills up.
So I don't know if we want to just leave it off, like, do you want me to just take away that whole bottom area? Are we still talking about utilities? Like, I was first.
Basically, say, for three additional weeks. Be specific on what you're doing with your water bill, I think.
So the first part's fine up until June 2020, and then, so the bottom part, that staff be directed to review the next quarterly utilities billings timelines and adjust the schedule. Like, where do you, sorry, what do you want changed?
So I was. To extend due dates by three weeks, I think is.
Personally, I'd rather see us go the 30 days on the utility bills, the three weeks, just. It's kind of an odd.
The intent of the three weeks was to try to just not have your tax levy coming due at the same time as your water bill. So it was sort of spreading out into obligations. If you want, you could keep your water bills still as due, for instance, given what you're doing with your tax interest relief. Or you could look to extend.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I think for lower-income people, having both bills due at the same time is just going to crush them. I think we should leave the water bill due date when it is. And, you know, if you got lots of money in the bank, yeah, getting both bills at the same time's no problem. But I think that psychologically and financially, it would crush a lot of people in town. So I think leave it, leave the water bill or bill where it is, the date it is.
So if I am amending the motion, then I can just like take out that whole third chunk there about utilities. So then it would just be, we're receiving the report and then talking about waiving penalties and interest for taxes until June 30th, 2020. But I'll reread it. I'm just, so that's, we're good on that, okay? So then the final motion should be moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2020-FIN-005 entitled Tax and Ratepayer Relief COVID-19 be received, and that staff be directed to present a bylaw to council to authorize the town of Kirkland Lake to waive the penalties and interests associated with late payments on the second installment due April 9th, 2020 until June 30th, 2020.
Counselor Owens?
Just a quick question like that. So for those that have their taxes taken off their mortgage payment, if they ask for a deferral of their mortgage payment through the bank, how, what's the impact on the municipality for our portion of the taxes?
I think that's, when we're talking about how fluid the situation is, that's one of those things where hasn't necessarily been communicated to municipalities, what would happen if they were that aspect of a mortgage? We're getting indication from various banks that it's in the next installment, but this could change the landscape a little bit if they're not drawing that in as well. I don't know if they'll roll it into the balance of the mortgage or how it would go forth. We'll be looking for some guidance on that.
All right, thanks.
Normally, the bank would make the payment regardless if the tax account was short. And they'd end up paying interest on that anyway, the property owner. So I still think we'll get the payment from the bank, but who knows, this is definitely a different situation than normal. The banks haven't been quite, haven't addressed that, I don't think, rate. But that would be the more. Are we okay to go ahead? All in favor? Thank you. We can go directly to adjournment. There's no further other business on the agenda.
A motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that council adjourn the March 31st, 2020 special meeting of council.
All in favor? Pass. Just a comment, I know.
Am I stopping?
Yeah.